Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids Council Meeting for Tuesday, September 18th, 2018. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Greskowiac.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. First item on our agenda this evening is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. We have one proclamation tonight, and that is to proclaim October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And the Alexandra House has asked the City Council to proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we will, all the proclamations that will be coming from the cities within Anoka County will be displayed at Alexandra House's Hope Fest event on September 29th, 2018, at Bunker Hills Regional Park in Andover. So let me grab this and go around front, and I believe we've got somebody here from Alexandra House that will receive this. So let me first read the proclamation, and then we'll let you introduce yourself. All right. Whereas, the community problem of domestic violence has become a critical public health and welfare concern in Anoka County, and whereas, domestic violence is a crime, the commission of which will not be tolerated in Anoka County, and perpetrators of said crime are subject to prosecution and conviction in accordance with the law, and whereas, over thousands of women and children have and will continue to access assistance from Alexandra House Incorporated, a domestic violence service provider, and whereas, domestic violence will be eliminated through community partnerships of concerned individuals and organizations working together to prevent abuse while at the same time affecting social and legal change, and whereas, October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and whereas, during National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Anoka County organizations will inform area residents about domestic violence, its prevalence, consequences, and what we, as a concerned community, can do to eliminate its existence. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the City Council and citizens of our city, officially proclaim October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Coon Rapids, proclaimed this 18th day of September, 2018. Now, welcome. Now, maybe you can introduce yourself and tell us about the Hope Fest, or whatever else you want to tell us about.
Whatever else I want to tell you about? How much time do I have?
Let me set the timer.
I'm just kidding. I'm Tina Bronson. I have the honor of serving as the Communications Marketing Director for Alexandra House, and I've been in my role for four and a half years, so I absolutely love the work that I get to do. And we are holding our Hope Fest event. That is September 29th. It's the last Saturday in September every year to really kick off the work that we do for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I brought brochures, and I'd love all of you to be there. We are changing up the event to try to make it more family-focused, so we're going to have fun things like games, inflatables. The Bones Brother BBQ team will be there selling their yummy yummy barbecue food, and all the proceeds of the event are, and their food and the games will go back to Alexandra House. And we use those funds to serve victims and survivors of domestic sexual violence, aging services for those who are older and that are being abused in their homes, and for dating relationships. So we work with the youth in Anoka County as well. So everything that we do at this event raises awareness, and it raises really critical funds for what we do. We couldn't do it without the support of the City of Coon Rapids, and I see Brad sitting over there, and he serves on the Walk a Mile Committee. So I see a lot of really familiar, friendly faces, so I want to say thank you for that support, because we couldn't do it alone. There's no way we could solve this problem, and there's no way we could fund it without all the support of everybody in this room and the community. So please come. You'll have fun, I promise. Your kids will have fun, your grandkids, your neighbor kids. Please don't take anyone off the street, though, that you don't know. We don't like that. But please do come, and really have fun, and see the people that are impacted every day that live in your community.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna give you the proclamation, and then I'm gonna leave these over here.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'll serve on a board with you around here with Chief Wise. Yeah. All right. The next item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of September 4th, 2018.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
I move to approve the minutes of September 4th, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We have two items on our consent agenda this evening. It's item three on the agenda this evening. It's to approve a therapeutic massage enterprise license for Palo Salon Spa LLC, 3510 124th Avenue Northwest, Suite 110. Anthony Gerald Houghan of Palo Salon Spa LLC has submitted an application and has leased space in the building of 3510 124th Avenue and paid the background investigation and license fee for a therapeutic massage enterprise license. He's also provided proof of the required liability insurance. Approval is contingent upon the Police Department background investigation findings. So we are looking to approve the issuance of a therapeutic massage enterprise license to Mr. Houghan for Palo Salon Spa LLC located at 3510 124th Avenue Northwest, Suite 110, pending a successful background investigation. And if I mispronounced either the name of the person or the company, I apologize. But I was consistent, I said it the same way each time, so it's either all right or all wrong. Next item on our consent agenda, and the last item, which is actually item four on this evening's agenda, is to approve a refund of a tobacco license for E-Sig Market. In April of 2018, Andrew Alls House applied for and was issued a tobacco license anticipating opening E-Sig Market at 12940 Riverdale Drive, Suite 800. Unfortunately, the lease negotiations fell through, and he was unable to open his business. After careful consideration of other business locations, Mr. Alls House has decided not to open a business in Coon Rapids at this time. He is now requesting a refund of the $190 tobacco license fee as he wasn't able to use it. So with this, we are looking to approve a refund of a tobacco license fee in the amount of $190 issued to Mr. Alls House of E-Sig Market.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Wells.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Wells, and second by Demmer to move the consent agenda. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item five is to consider, it's a grant application from the United States Department of Justice. Chief Wise, do you want to cover this one?
Yes, Sheriff. Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, Council. As you know, for the last several years, we've been awarded a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice under the, it's called Justice Assistance Grant. The grant award tends to be around $10,000 or thereabouts. One of the grant conditions, well, actually, there's several conditions, but the ones that matter most, I think, to taxpayers here in Coon Rapids is one, the funds have to be spent on something that's non-supplanting, meaning we can't just take something off of the existing city budget and use the grant funds for that purpose. But two, it has to be for law enforcement equipment. So we try to be very practical, and in this case, we fill out an application for the grant. We awarded the grant. Then we send a grant proposal to the Department of Justice on what we want to spend it on, and then the requirement is to hold a public hearing to allow anyone in, any citizen who wants to weigh in on it if they think that maybe we're not using the funds the way they should be. So we propose to spend the $12,163 to purchase two portable breath tests, which we use for driving while intoxicated enforcement. They're a portable tool that's used out in the field and in squad cars. To buy four tasers, we have a number of tasers, but they sometimes break down and have to be sent in for repair, so we don't issue tasers to every officer. Instead, we have a supply of tasers that the officers check out at the beginning of their shifts, so just to supplement that number. The vehicle alarms refers to our unmarked police vehicles that have specialized equipment in them, and for a couple hundred dollars each, we can install vehicle alarms to enhance the safety and security of those vehicles when they're somewhere else, such as at court or at training sessions and so on. And a portable printer just refers to a printer that's in a squad car for printing out citations. Good old traffic tickets. They're now printed.
One of our officers burned his out.
Yes.
Yeah.
Remind the public to please slow down, pay attention to semaphores, as long as you're giving me a free moment here, so. Stop for a red light, please.
All right.
So, public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Anybody have any questions before we open the public hearing? If not, we will open the public hearing on the proposed JAG grant expenditures. Anybody here to address council for that? Anybody here to address council over the JAG expenditure? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and look for a motion from council. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the purchases for the grant as proposed, providing an entry into the memorandum of understanding with Anoka County.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We are up to, under new business, planning case 18-10. It almost seems like this should be under old business. Planning case 18-10, consider resolution 18-95, final plat approval. This is the Steindl Second Edition, the plat that creates two parcels, let's see, two into four single-family lots, Main Street and Shenandoah Boulevard. I don't know how many times we've looked at this. Anybody want to see it again?
I'm tired of pulling that map up.
Okay, so maybe somebody just wants to make a motion to get us through this. Yeah. Councilmember Kicker.
I'll make a motion that the council approve, resolution 18-95 granting final plat approval for the Polno Estates with the following conditions, and it's the six conditions. We need to read those.
As stated.
As stated.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item seven is to consider resolutions ordering preparation of feasibility report and plans for Project 19-1. I don't see Mr. Hanson here. Is this gonna be the Tim Hammer Show tonight?
No, Mr. Mayor, this is just a kickoff ordering preparation of feasibility studies. There's not a lot here, other than outlining the roadways here for the next three items. All the fun details, Mr. Hanson will be happy to share with you when those feasibility reports are prepared, assessments, improvements, costs, breakdowns, all of that stuff.
All right, very good. So the first one, item seven, is to consider resolutions. Project 19-1 consists of the reconstruction of approximately four miles of residential streets, and it's, again, 19 different streets, so I'm not gonna list them all, but, yeah, and then we will have the program later, so. Counsel?
Your Honor.
Yeah. Councilmember Demmer.
I move to adopt resolution number 19-1 sub-three, ordering preparation and feasibility report, and move to adopt resolution 19-1 sub-six, ordering preparation of plans.
Second.
So we have a motion to adopt the following resolutions necessary for Project 19-1. Those are the resolutions you just made a motion on. Do we have a second? Okay. Just wanted to make sure those were all there. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Greskowiac.
If I could just ask a couple of things on 19-1 that affect 19-2 and 3. Is number one, is when we ask for the plans and specifications for these projects, is there anything that we can do to ask or write into our contract better reseating of the sidewalks and the frontage of the yards when these are done? I'm not sure if we can do a better job there, but that's one thing that we all hear about, maybe better dirt, more seeding, maybe then coming upon, the contractor to come by, kill some weeds, and spread some more seed down. So that was one thing I wanted to point out. And then the other is, on the Project 19.1, where we're gonna put a sidewalk from Crooked Lake to Coon Creek Boulevard, which is a great safety addition, everyone is on board with that, being that we're gonna be taking up some of the landowner's land to do that, would there be another public hearing to talk about that plan changed to the roadway after or before the next, this fall meeting coming up?
Councilmember Greskowiac, to your first item, October 9th, we'll be sitting with you to talk about project standards, reconstruction, seeding. When you look at spending millions of dollars on these projects, what people notice in the end is $50 worth of seed, potentially. I mean, really, that's what it boils down to. So yes, there are things we've tried every year, and we'll be happy, we'll speak to those in more depth on October 9th as part of a work session discussion. With regard to the sidewalk, the intent is to put it in the right way. Should it impact property owners' private property, then we would have to acquire easements and go that route. We have a neighborhood meeting planned for November, another one planned in January, so there will be ample opportunity for the public to be aware. Do we get 100% attendance at those meetings? No, we do not. But if there were situations where we're impacting private property outside of the right-of-way, there would be a targeted mailing directly to that individual or individuals outlining what the issues are, what we may need from them, and then we would negotiate directly with that person or persons.
All right. Very good. Regarding the seeding, we'll talk more about that in our work session, but, I mean, we cut into some pretty nice yards. A lot of people take a lot of pride in that work. We're cutting into a perfectly good yard, and they want to see it returned to that state, so we'll look forward to more discussion on that.
Yeah. That was a really good point. We heard quite a bit from the neighbors over in Ward 3 of Foley. Yeah, where they, it wasn't just the weeds there, it was like, what did they call topsoil? There's like rocks and gravel. It's like class V.
Like class V.
Yeah.
I'm still picking rocks out of my yard.
All right, very good. So we had a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And item eight, it's kind of the same deal, except it's Project 19-2, and this is the MSA street reconstruction. This is just, this is 2.3 miles of municipal state aid streets, Wedgewood Drive from Main Street to Round Lake Boulevard, Olive Street from Main Street to 121st, and Foley Boulevard from 124th Lane to 115th Avenue. You're gonna have a lot of people at that neighborhood meeting, I'll bet.
I bet we will.
Lot of interest.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 19-2 sub-three, ordering the preparation and feasibility report, and adopt resolution 19-2 sub-six, ordering preparation of plans.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Discussion? Have something, Councilmember Johnson?
Nope. I think Councilmember Greskowiac spelled it out well in the last one.
Okay. Councilmember Demmer?
Just a couple of questions. So these are the MSA ones, so that includes state aid. The 2.3 miles, that seems like something we'll be able to get state aid money for. Is that sort of how you pick the 2.3 miles, and then we would adjust if we don't get enough money, or are we, what happens from here with the state aid?
Councilmember Demmer, if you recall, we are probably a year ahead, so we will request another advance. We continue to request advances for, you know, free money, if you will. We get a little over $2 million a year in state aid, so we're kind of at that one year. And for a while, we said, well, let's take a step back. We haven't had to do that yet, because we continue to move forward, we continue to get the advances. So while we have that opportunity, we'll continue to do so, but there will probably be a year that will take off a state aid year and not do any, and just do local roads.
And the second thing was conversion of an existing sidewalk into an asphalt trail will be reviewed. So in a state aid road, we're allowed to build a bike trail with the state aid money instead of using, say, the Parks and Trails referendum?
Trails and sidewalks are eligible for state aid funding. That's correct. We have an existing trail or an existing sidewalk. More than likely, what we would look at is the wide shoulders that are there, that's no parking, so we'll probably narrow up the roadway and use what was a shoulder at one point to do that, and also help ease the transitions for driveways and impacts to private property.
And that's a place where we think a trail makes more sense than a sidewalk, based on what it connects to?
Well, the whole idea from Highway 10 all the way up to Bunker Hills has been a trail on one side and a sidewalk on the other, and it exists everywhere except now when you get north of Northdale, so this is the continuation to get it up to Tim's glorious golf course. He's not here, so I'll say it for him.
That was the way I sort of thought I remembered it, is that might be the last section? Is that really the last section?
Yeah, once you get north of Maine, there's a trail that kind of dives off on the east side through the woods. There may be something there in the future, but then also getting up into the regional park and the wave pool and all that sort of stuff. So that's the idea as we head north. We still gotta maybe look at how we improve as we go across the bridge to the south down into Woodcrest and down to Coon Rapids Boulevard.
Then the punchline to that question was, was that always planned to come out of state aid money, or was that at some point planned to come out of referendum, and therefore we could use that amount for a different trail somewhere else?
It was always intended to be a project cost, not anything related to the referendum.
Okay.
As we go through the feasibility study, we'll have to see how that shakes out, and certainly that would be part of the funding package if we get to the end of that feasibility, or when we get to the end of that feasibility.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Johnson?
Just as a follow-up question related to that, I'm fully in support of this notion that we're going to connect up the city north, south, east, and west through our trails, which I think has been a goal for some time now. But I know I'm gonna get asked this question when people hear that this part of Foley is going to be improved, and that there'll be a trail extension that goes up there. So can we commit, can I say to people, Mr. Hammer, that we will not be putting any mailboxes in sidewalks or putting any mailboxes in trails in that part of Foley, so I can kill that question?
Councilmember Johnson, without a doubt, there will be no mailboxes in sidewalks on this segment of Foley Boulevard.
Bless you, people, you heard it here.
Well, a little more control on this project. This is a city project.
That is correct.
And, Mr. Hammer, I think we refer to that as state money, not free money, it's state money, because basically our residents, it comes out of their left pocket instead of their right pocket.
It's just free.
And yours and mine, it's the gas tax.
Yep. All right. All right, very good. So, let's see, did we, yeah, we voted on that, right? Yes.
We haven't voted yet?
We haven't voted yet? I've already gone to the next item. Are you sure?
I'm sure.
All right. So then we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And now we are on number nine, item nine, which is to consider resolutions ordering preparation of feasibility report and plans for Project 19-3, street construction, which is 3.3 miles of residential streets, and it's another 19 different segments of streets. So I would just encourage folks that if you've gotten a letter in the mail, then you know that it's yours, right? Or no letters yet? Have the letters gone out?
They will go out for a November meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right. So they'll know shortly, then. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 19-3 sub-three, ordering preparation of feasibility report, and motion to adopt resolution 19-3 sub-six, ordering preparation of plans.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 10 is to consider resolution number 18-96, authorizing execution of Minnesota DNR Cooperative Agreement for the Crooked Lake Fishing Pier. Mr. Hammer, anything highlights you want to hit on that? It sure looks nice.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a follow-up from some previous discussion where we decided to retain the old pier and add to it. This is an opportunity for the city to invest some labor, and the state then provides the materials for us to rehab the old dock. We've already put the ADA, we're in compliance with everything else other than putting a sign up. So it's an opportunity to get some funds to have two fishing piers on the lake versus a single one, and so we would recommend your approval.
Nice. All right. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I'll move adoption of resolution 18-96 and authorize the execution of the cooperative agreement and attaching a certified copy of resolution 18-96 as Exhibit B.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Greskowiac. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Last item on our agenda is to consider resolution number 19-8 sub-eight, accepting plans and specifications for bunker renovation at Bunker Hills Golf Course and authorizing solicitation of bids. Mr. Anderson's missing a whole opportunity here to talk about the golf course. Mr. Semwitt, do you want to cover this?
Sure. Mayor, Council, this is a project that's proposed in the 2019 budget, which obviously has not been approved yet. The importance of this timing is that the, this type of work needs to be completed as soon as available in the spring, and in order to get this work out of the way for the opening of the golf course. In addition, contractors tend to get very clogged up that time of year, and so our hope here is to get this out to bid as soon as possible, find out what those numbers are, be able to present that information back to council, and then obviously, as a part of the approval process moving forward, it'll be better timed with where the budget will be. This would complete, then, the bunker renovations on the 27 championship holes out at Bunker Hills, and with the add alternate of a new practice green near the executive nine holes on the east side of the course.
All right, very good. Anybody have any questions?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion that the council adopt resolution number 19-8 sub-eight, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisements for bids for the West Nine Bunker renovation project at Bunker Hills Golf Course.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer. Any discussion?
Question?
Councilmember Demmer?
So I like the fact that we'll get bid results before we've approved the final budget. That seems nice. What happens if the bid results are significantly different one way or another than the budget?
Counsel, Councilmember Demmer, the, obviously, that's something that could be affected before then. The key here is with, really, that add alternate, it was budgeted for within this project cost. It's something that is certainly more of a want than a need, is where they would feel that bunker renovations would be, so if it pushed came to shove, that project would have to be delayed or deferred to a different time. And we use those sellers to potentially, for the bunkers. In addition, there's a lot of things that you can do to reshape the size and scope of the project, to make it less expensive. We've even looked at that. As these projects have come on in the past out in the field, when you're working with a contractor, a lot of times they'll give you suggestions about, you know, I don't know if you want to go this deep with the bunker or this wide, they'll shrink it up, and actually we see, realize some savings through conversations like that as well.
So that's an interesting topic that maybe we should discuss at a work session around this time, because, I mean, if you just said there's ways to save money in the budget, and there's things that are wants, not needs, I'd be curious how they were prioritized over other things that we chose not to do in the budget. So that, not that this isn't the right thing to do with the money, but that is, you know, it sounds like you put it in as buffer in case the, it came back higher, which, you know, I'm not totally sure if I'm getting that, but this, you know, if that is something that's not as needed, the last item, it would be interesting just to stack that up against other things that we cut.
Yeah. Well, except that this is the enterprise fund, and this is the golf course budget.
Is this, okay, so it's coming out of the golf.
Yeah.
All right. All right. So that.
So it isn't like we're cutting a park playground for the bunkers.
All right. So this, that's a good, a good side note, so it's specific to the golf courses portion of the enterprise fund and how they choose to spend it.
Mr. Semwodl?
Yeah, Mayor Council, that's correct. It's part of the capital planning for the golf course. And I guess my comment about the additional practice green was really, Mr. Anderson hoped to really just identify if that project was possible within dollar amount he presented. His opinion is that of the two, the bunkers are the more pressing immediate need. We've made an investment in two-thirds of the course to get those completed. I feel strongly about the need to get this last third completed. We've had some issues with the black tarp underneath the existing holes, as well as just the maintenance. Bunkers are getting smaller, they're getting shallower as it is for a long-term maintenance standpoint, in that his thought was that if, for some reason, the numbers came back and it made it challenging to do the additional practice green, that would be his first choice to defer.
Sure.
As opposed to the bunkers.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviak?
I just think Councilmember Demmer's point's well taken, even though this is an enterprise fund, the enterprise fund for the golf operations, in my understanding, is still running a deficit, so I think he makes a great point. Just want to add it in.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. We are at the open mic, public comment portion of the evening. Anybody here for open mic this evening? Well, come on, lighten up here, guys.[1634.33][1634.33](laughing) All right, seeing nobody here for open mic. We don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are at other business. I got a couple things here. One was, I'd like to thank Texas Roadhouse for hosting a great event last night, a rib-eating contest between the Coon Rapids Police Department and the Coon Rapids Fire Department. Chief Piper, any comments? Or do we have to talk to Chief Wise since they won?
Well, I suppose if you were as mayor and council, the police department deserved to win. They, we started out with a bang, but they came from behind and won. However, with that in mind, I was hoping some of this money left over for, if the bunkers come in a little bit less, we could use some of that money and start a training program for our firefighters.[1686.13][1686.13](laughing) We could have tryouts, and then we could have an intense training program so we could try to reverse the outcome a year from now, but would that all pass to Chief Wise?
Next year, we gotta get the council.
Is that part of the JAG funds, Chief? Are you getting a greeting for it?
Simulator.
Yeah, so.
I'm good.
It was a real nice event, and they, I don't remember how much money they put up, but it was the.
The Mayor Council, the Police Department would receive a donation for $700 as the winners, and Fire Department was gonna receive $300.
Okay. Very good. Yeah, it was a very nice event, and it was well attended, and thank you to Texas Roadhouse for all their community involvement.
They've been a big supporter of the community ever since they opened.
And then the other item is, we've still got Farmer's Market going on Wednesday afternoons for a while yet, through October sometime, right? And then the September 22nd, is that Love My Pet Fair?
Yes.
Okay.